Good evening, everyone. All right, welcome to the, uh, what's it?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth of November, zoning board hearing. Tonight we have two applications. The first application is on 21 Beaver Street. Prior to us, starting with the formal process, we currently, right now, have a January hearing. What was that date in January? Just so that I have it. Okay. This is on the application of these Main Street properties, A32 Asensby invented, for comprehensive permit pursuant to General Law's Chapter 40B in relation to a 14.6 four miles possible land located in 21 Beaver Street, which possibly shown on the session sheet 44, Lot 25. The petition proposes develop and construct 103 unit rental apartment development on site, if not less than 26 of the units to be restricted as affordable for low and moderate income persons pursuant to the applicative law requirements of the planning agency. Project eligibility letter was issued by Mass Housing Financing Agency in relation to the site on October 24th, 24. All members are currently present. Assuming no conflicts, correct? No. Okay, with that, good to go. Applicants provided some documentation. Looks like they have a slide presentation before that. I'll turn it over to 40B Board Member Three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I have for you, some of you have heard this presentation last week, something that has to do with something that should be done, in my view, within 15 days of the opening of the public hearing. We are, as you see from the bottom of the table, I think they're giving you the... We are currently at 9.5 percent of all modern building projects as basically in right now from the past. And that's from a legal perspective in terms of the requirements under the Code of Management and Regulation, 9.5 percent. Not 10 percent, which if we were at it, would allow you to, just to clarify, would allow you to perhaps enforce zoning and other regulations in the existing regulations. So we're 9.5 percent. However, in reality, in terms of the numbers of comprehensive permits in the issue, we would be at 11.6 percent. If Stone Ridge Two had applied for building permits, they didn't apply for building permits for a year, then we can no longer count them. Therefore, we're at 9.5 in a legal perspective today. What I've given you here really has to do with the provision of the Code of Management and Regulation that says that if a community is going to rely upon reaching 10 percent as a basis to deny or condition an application, then you have to provide notice to the applicant for 15 days of the opening of the public hearing. That's tonight, the opening of the public hearing. So it's my recommendation that we give this notice, and therefore vote to give this notice. This isn't decisive on anything. This is basically protecting our rights in case something changes now down the road. And if that changes, perhaps this building permit issue for Stone Ridge Two, perhaps one of these projects is granted. A number of things could change that would perhaps bring the 10 percent into play. We just don't want it to be said that, well, you didn't give the notice within 14 years, but it's 15 days approaching the public hearing. So that's all the citizens who are looking up to protect our towns' interests in the event that happens and in the event you feel it's necessary to exercise your rights under the statute and in the regulations. So that's all the citizens who are protecting our towns' interests. So I give it my recommendation that you vote to our decision to sign this, and we'll get the notice out until the applicant's law and contract. But you'll still go forward now with the public hearing as you will with all of these things that you have along with the meeting that we have behind us. So those will still go forward. This is just protecting our interests in the event there's some changes.
That's similar to what we just did last week.
Exactly.
For that, motion?
Motion.
Motion by the Honors or Second?
Second.
Second by all those in favor, opposed, that's unanimous.
And just by way of further background, of course, the applicants came in recently. We receive them, we get them to you. And they've also gone to all the various departments, the water, the sewer, the fire, the highway, the county engineer. They've all had it, and reports will begin to come in full time. I think the water and the fire, I don't know if that's improved anything so far, others will do it. It's still fairly early in the process. And we'll be utilizing the, we consult CDI, we use all the other comprehensive environmental people, we'll be working with them, or actually, we'll be getting contact with these applicants and any of us that are in the process.
Great. Thank you. Good. Thank you. With that, please state your name and who you're representing, so that we have a record.
Sure, I'm Lynn Sweet with LDS Consulting Group out of Wellesley. I'm the 40B consultant for this project.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Jonathan Silverstein. I'm counsel for the applicant.
You look familiar. Welcome.
Thank you.
And Tara Fay Adams, the development manager for that.
I didn't recognize you, but welcome.
Thanks.
All right, with that, why don't you go ahead and open the presentation.
Terrific. Do you mind?
Thank you, guys.
Great. So we do have a rather lengthy presentation. The first few slides pertain to both of the applications, and then we will go into the details of Beaver Street, and we can then take a pause if you want to open up the hearing for Fortune Boulevard, and then we could do the slides for that. It's your meeting, you know, it's up to you. We'll try and be as quick as possible. So basically, I just want to quickly introduce the rest of the team. I'm gonna, they're all sitting behind me. I'll have them just say hello real quickly.
Hi, Jason Adams with Bowman Consulting, we're the traffic engineers.
John Cusick with Bowler, the civil side engineer.
Matt Murva, also with Bowler, landscape architect.
Axel Holberg, principal architect with HFA.
Mike Cornoni, architect with the HFA.
Great, thank you.
Terrific. So, a little bit more detail on everybody. So we're already through three slides. We've gone really fast. So, this is my first time in this community, and I apologize if you already know this information, but Jonathan and I are gonna go through a little bit of kind of the legal process and kind of how we arrived here today. I think some of you are familiar with 40B and have worked on them before, but the process started with a submission to Mass Housing this past July, where we asked them to issue a project eligibility letter. During that period, we, the town, had a time to provide comments, and they did provide those comments to Mass Housing, and everyone attended a sit walk in August to the locations. And Mass Housing, at the end of the day, in October, made seven findings on the property and issued project eligibility letters. And it's that issuance of the project eligibility letter that allows us to come before you and ask for a comprehensive permit. And I am now going to turn it over to Jonathan to talk about some other process issues and where we are today.
Sure, so, thank you, members of the board, and I should have mentioned earlier, just for the record, a new attorney with my firm, Anthony Malakas, is here as well in the audience. So, as Lynn indicated, a project eligibility letter was issued in this application, or these two applications were filed in September. It's been distributed, I assume, to departments and other boards. You've scheduled the public hearing, and you're opening it tonight within the 30 days required. There's 180-day deadline to close the public hearing, and then the board has 40 days after that to issue or to make a decision. So I want to just touch on something Attorney Moody mentioned earlier, and just so that the board is fully informed. The regulations of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which used to be called Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, are very clear that a decision to deny a comprehensive permit based upon a safe harbor, such as the 10 percent, can only be made if the town is in safe harbor as of the date of the project's application. So there's a snapshot in time. The snapshot in time is the date that we filed our application, which I believe was September 25th, maybe?
It was October 31st.
October 31st, sorry.
It's Halloween.
I think you have a different application, that's right. October 31st. I don't think anyone disputes that the town was at 9.5 percent as of October 31st. So, I know that the board did take that vote earlier. My request on behalf of the applicant would be that the board rescind that vote, because if that notice is issued, it forces us to appeal. It forces us to then go to the housing, the EOHLC, to contest the safe harbor notice, which I don't think anyone would argue that the town was at 10 percent as of the date of the application. And that time of the application language has been repeated by numerous judicial decisions as well as Housing Appeals Committee decisions. And so it would just be putting the board, the town, the applicant to needless expense and delay in terms of litigation expenses and a delay in the proceedings. But we have no choice but to contest it if you issue that notice, because if we don't contest it, we've waived our ability to do so. So, there's really no legal basis to assert safe harbor, but it would force us all into litigation at an early stage, which I don't think is in anyone's interest. It's obviously up to the board to make that decision. I don't know if you want me to pause now.
I have a question.
Of course.
Is the type of site the only criteria on the safe harbor?
There are other types of safe harbors. For instance, there's what's called the general land area minimum. If there are affordable housing developments on 1.5 percent of the land in the town, then you can assert, what GLAM is the acronym that's applied to that. I don't, very few communities, I think maybe three or four in the state, have actually been able to demonstrate they've reached that, and I don't think Milford has a pretty large land area, so I don't think that, it's not for my, for me to advise you, but I don't think anyone would suggest that you've reached that. There are safe harbors, temporary safe harbors, that can apply if you have an approved housing production plan and have met your goals under that housing production plan, but the plan has to have been certified, and you have to have met those goals, again, as of the date of the application.
Yep, Milford doesn't have a housing production plan.
So, really, I think the only one that could even potentially be in play for Milford is the 10 percent, but again, you're not gonna, you're not there as of the date of the application.
If I can interject for the benefit of the board members, you're absolutely aware of various positions, and I don't think this is the appropriate place to debate these. But again, just as Attorney indicated, there's protect his clients' interests and make sure they don't waive any rights, as I indicated in the beginning. We want to just make sure that we don't waive our rights and their rights. That's all this is. And if they certainly have a right to appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee, we'll handle that if they do. There are things that can happen that can protect both interests if that should go out of bounds. But Attorney Murray and I have really strongly recommended that you maintain your vote and take this, give the notice. If it has to be an appeal, we'll give it.
Do you want to talk about units when they're eligible for an SHI, or is it...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's really any dispute as to whether the town has reached the 9.5 percent. I included this information just to indicate when a unit is eligible for inclusion. I think Attorney Moody's already, you know, acknowledged that since it's been more than a year since the comprehensive permit was issued, those units for...
Stone Ridge Two.
Stone Ridge Two. Those units aren't counted until a building permit is issued, so that's all this slide is indicating.
Okay. So, basically, with comprehensive permits, the statute basically asks a community to weigh local needs against the regional need for affordable housing. So we have provided some information with regard to the local and the regional need for affordable housing.
We have seen this plenty of times.
Okay.
Only because we've been through this plenty of times.
I know that there are alternate board members. I don't know whether or not they've been through the process before, so, you know, the rent burden means that a resident is paying more than 30 percent of their income on housing costs, and severely rent burden means that they're paying more than 50 percent of their income on housing costs. Your master plan shows a need for diversity in housing, including income levels, and there is more than enough information out there in the public right now to show that Massachusetts is facing a housing crisis. We are growing more jobs and more people than we have households. With regard to both of these projects, specifically to affordability, 25 percent of the units will be affordable to households earning 80 percent of area median income. Because it is a rental project, and 25 percent of the units will be affordable, all of the units will be counted on the town subsidized housing inventory, assuming that Mass Housing, which is the state agency that we're dealing with on this, approves a local preference, there will be, if the board so votes, there will be an opportunity for 70 percent of those affordable units to have, local residents to have a first preference for 70 percent of those units. The units will be affordable in perpetuity. There won't be any difference between the market rate and the affordable units with regard to finishes. And I think what's really important here is that these properties are going to be owned and managed by a local company. Ty and his company have a lot of holdings in this area. If you have an affordable unit, you're not going to be calling somebody out in California. You're going to be dealing with somebody here that's in this, you know, for the long haul. It will be professionally managed. And more importantly, with regard to the affordable units, there are rules and regulations in place. The developer is gonna have to provide and prove to Mass Housing that they have an approved marketing plan. And right now, we haven't, it's very early in the process, but the lottery agents, those are the people that approve and qualify units and certify their income every year. We are looking at two local companies, SEB, which is based in Needham, and Maloney, which is out of Wellesley. So I'm gonna give you the overview for Beaver Street, and then gonna let our professionals take you through the plans, if you, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look at them. So Beaver Street is a 103, as proposed, 103 rental units. It's currently a vacant paved parking lot. They're proposing a four-story elevator building with 157 parking spaces. All units will be visitable, because it is an elevator building, and as required by code, 5 percent of the units will meet ADA Group Two standards. Units will have Class A apartment finishes, open concept plans, there'll be onsite leasing, indoor fitness, and bike storage. We will talk a little bit more about pedestrian connections, the passive recreation, all lighting will be dark sky compliant. The applicant will meet with the school department to figure out the best location for drop-off and pickup of children, to ensure that that is a safe place for them. And the one change that we made, which is a minor change, but a really important change, came out of the sit walk with the fire department. And that was that with regard, there's a courtyard in the back of the building that is for passive recreation, and the fire department asked for a 20-foot clear aisle in the center of that, that will be flush mountable curb, so that if a fire truck needs to get to inside the courtyard, they can just drive right up the middle. You know, I will point out that we had wanted to try and meet with the fire department to get approvals, and we were unable to do that, which was a little frustrating for our team, but we believe that what we're proposing meets their needs, and we hope to be, meeting with department heads going forward. So I'm gonna turn it over to our architect.
Just a quick comment on the fire department.
Yeah.
Only because, can't tell you how many times it's been down this road. So, the fire chief with the new engine has to have not only the free access, but also the reach with the ladder. So we had to make a multitude of changes with Stone Ridge One and Stone Ridge Two. Same thing is now being applied to Stone Ridge Three. So when you get that conversation with the fire chief, I'm sure he'll try and give you as much clarity as possible, specifically, you know, with the length of the ladder, where it's gonna go.
We were told...
Especially when this car's parked through the entire complex.
We tried meeting with the fire chief, and we were told by town council, that they were told by town council they weren't allowed to meet with us.
Well, that's simply not true. I would say that someone's misunderstanding.
We have your email.
Well, okay.
So we just want to make sure that the door is open for us to meet with department heads. Terrific. Excellent. All right.
Okay. So I will just give us a high-level overview of the design and the rationale behind the floor plan.
You're all good standing?
I'm fine standing. I'll be sitting with my post of the evening.
Okay.
So overall, the building, in its nature, is a very functionally-driven design. We had to prioritize a very intentionally arranged configuration of unit types here, single bed, two bed, and three bed, all of those. We coordinated directly with Lynn and her team to understand what the market needs were, and so the intention of the unit mixes here is such that it applies to the market and creates the most competitive arrangement of units here. Given that this is a 40B, and there is an affordable component of the project, we also are endeavoring with this design to make use of simple geometries, repeatable units, and optimize our use of resources so that the building's construction and the systems employed are highly efficient. So overall function is at the core of the design. I'll just walk up to the plan here. So, at the ground level, the courtyard, which Lynn just mentioned, is to the plan south here. The center area that you see, oh, I'm doing something, so I'll stop that.
You got laser pointer?
I do, hang on.
Mail. I think you just, when you put your hand in, it probably blocks the...
It's the center area, and if you all have the plans on your end, you're seeing the, there is a core of public area amenities on the ground floor. What we see now in the plans is a loose block planning study to show the amenities that would be there. We also evaluated competitive market rate properties in the region to make sure that the amenities we're planning to include in this project are similar, equal, or better than other developments. So each floor above this is a fairly repetitive stack of unit types, and the ground floor is intended to provide the majority of common area amenity spaces.
Quick question on the market rates. Have you used the information from the past developments that are already built to help that market rate?
That's a question for Lynn.
In terms of the price of the units?
You indicated, your proposed market rate.
Oh, no, sorry if I miscommunicated that. We were researching the types of public area amenities within comparable market rate developments, to ensure that we're providing comparable amenities for all the residents. So, fitness center, co-working spaces, communal kitchens, and then, of course, all of the areas out here in the courtyard to the plan south. So, from an architectural design perspective, we made sure that we researched comparable market rate projects. So, go to the next. So this is, go back one more. So this is the typical upper level, and again, you can see it's a fairly efficient arrangement of just a few archetypes of unit plans, which allows us to be very efficient in our use of materials and repeatable details. Now you can flip to the next sheet if you don't want to. So, as you can see, we've got a small group of typical unit sizes. Each unit is intended to maximize its exposure to daylight. Each unit also is afforded direct access to a recessed balcony that you see here, and we'll see those more in the renderings as we move forward. Each unit, we designed to have a blend of open floor plan functions with communal living spaces surrounded immediately by the ancillary supporting rooms for the private functions. Next slide, please. So the exterior elevations of the buildings, again, this is a very form follows function driven design, so the efficiency being the name of the game, the elevations are a fairly simple geometrical form. However, we did endeavor to break those up through employing a kit of language, if you will, that is highly inspired by a contemporary spin on New England classic vernacular styles. So what we see here is a blend of board and batten vertical siding, clappard siding. In certain areas, we have the asphalt architectural shingle roofs, cladding on the upper level. And while there is no actual mansard here, the intention of employing that cladding device is to evoke that classical New England take on the mansard roof. And when viewed in perspective, which you'll see when we get to the rendering, it does effectively help reduce the scale of the building when viewed from ground level, and also adds a nice break in texture. All of the exterior balconies you can see are recessed, so this allows us to employ passive shading devices, which, this being a stretch code community, we're highly sensitive to the energy usage and sustainable design measures that we can take in the building. Let's go to the next slide. So this is viewing the plan south. You can see the courtyard here is being cradled by the surrounding form. Next slide, please. And so here is the overall architectural concept in perspective. So again, you can see how these recessed balconies create nice undulating rhythms of deep shadow lines. We employ standing seam awnings above some of the windows, again, as that architectural shading device to help reduce the excessive solar heat gain on the interior. And of course, then landscaping around the buildings is gonna help soften the edge and create a nice inflated environment for the residents on site. So, that's the architecture in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm just gonna add two things to that. That was really tricky. These are just technical things, but under a 40B, 10 percent of the units need to be three-bedroom units. Also, because these units are gonna be going through this approval process for the marketing plan, the unit sizes also need to be above a certain size, and we meet those. And the last thing is, with regard to our unit mix, most of the units are, the majority of the units are smaller, one bedrooms. I think 60 or 65 percent of the units are one bedrooms, and the balance are the twos and then the 10 percent three-bedroom units.
Yep.
Terrific, thank you.
You run at 710 square feet up to 1320?
Yeah, the minimum is, I think, 700 for a one bedroom, and so on and so forth. So, and with regard to the community amenities, you heard him say, you know, work from home space and so on and so forth. We've tried, because the world has changed with regard to work, and I know about you guys, I have my staff in my office two days a week, and I work from home. The wonderful thing that we have, because this is a new building that we can design, is we can design that towards people working from home more, that is also gonna impact, you know, traffic and the number of people that are coming and going, because we're trying to build comforts into the building for them to work from home.
Yep, and that was also factored into the unit plans themselves as well.
Yeah.
In addition to the common area amenities that we have to support work from home, we also intentionally laid out each residential unit to provide nooks or spaces which are accommodating of having a desk and being able to work from home in the common area living space. So definitely employing the spirit of the times in the design. So definitely employing the spirit of the times in the design.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom Bowler. Again, Matt Murva with Bowler. I'm just going to walk through some of the site features that you've seen the architecture to kind of put that in some context. So I think the easiest way to show it is sort of a before-and-after diagram here. This is the existing lot here. It's 100% paved parking lot right now, off Beaver Street, almost at the intersection of Medway Street. So it's basically paved from edge to edge. There's a bit of a landscape buffer along Beaver Street here, and an entry into the existing parking facility. If you click to the next slide, you'll see our building in context. So what we're actually doing is relocating the entry slightly and positioning the building centered within the site with parking surrounding it. Again, it's 157 parking spaces for our 103 rental units. We're maintaining the existing buffer along Beaver Street, providing walkway connection out to Medway Street, sidewalks throughout the development, and green space that will significantly decrease the amount of impervious area on the site. You'll notice that, you know, the current condition is 100% paved, edge to edge. We're introducing quite a bit of pervious area through our landscape areas and amenity spaces. The courtyard that Lynn and Axel both mentioned is right here in the center of the space. We've got a passive lawn area, outdoor dining and lounge area, fire pit, and then sort of a main entrance here with some soft seating around that. The access that the fire department was seeking was really to allow for a truck to come right up the center here to get to the building, have their ladders be able to reach. So we're providing stabilized lawn on both sides of this center aisle and keeping that area free and clear of landscape and any protrusions. Yes, sir?
You moved the curb cut further to the intersection. Is that something that, has the planning board looked at this yet? Have you been in front of the planning board yet?
This will be our kind of first meeting, and we also have, we'll get into the access a little bit with Jason, who's going to talk traffic in just a second, so he can speak to that as well. We've got an entrance and drop-off here, so people entering the site will have a place to pull up. If you're delivering food or picking someone up, we've got that dedicated spot for kind of a main entrance on this side as well. So really, that'll be kind of a pass-through from front to back within the building. We provided for snow storage areas on-site, provided ample landscape in the form of street trees, deciduous and evergreen throughout the site, creating some additional buffering to the McDonald's property along the northern frontage, and then shrub beds and foundation planting throughout that'll be a mix of evergreen and seasonal varieties that'll provide some outdoor interest for four seasons throughout the year. We're providing native and drought-tolerant species to reduce our reliance on irrigation and preserve water. So we feel that the design, and we've got more detailed plans that have been provided as part of your package, but just wanted to give you this overview here. If you click ahead, Tark, you can see some of the more detailed plans.
I don't see any playground or dog walking, none of that is proposed?
This, the amenity area is really this area here. So there's not a dog park, per se, but there's area at the perimeters where people can certainly walk animals, but we're not providing a playground.
Is this a dog-friendly?
Dog-friendly? I believe so.
Yeah. Yeah. And we, I mean, some of the amenity space, it's very early to plan that out. We can always put in a dog walk, wash station, we can always put in a dog walk area.
First meeting, so.
Yeah. No, those are, it's important, it's got to be livable.
Yes. If you just, if you click ahead through the next couple, this, just showing the drainage, we're proposing subsurface treatment chambers that would outfall to the existing system once infiltration was happening on here. I've got John Cusick with us tonight if you have any questions on how the utilities or infrastructure work, but we've provided those designs as part of the package as well. Excellent. I think that's it for us for right now. I'll turn it over to Jason, who's going to talk through some of the-
Yeah, I'm just going to take one more minute.
Sure.
That was really terrific. So, you know, just a couple more things. Your package did include a fire truck turning radius in, not this handout, but in the booklets that you all have. There's 11-by-17 plans that you can fold out. I know that there are some new members tonight that might not have the notebooks. If you need them, let us know, we can provide more. So there's the fire truck turning radius, there are landscape plans as well. And this last slide here is really a very important slide, because one of the things that we are asking for you, will be asking for you as a board to do, is to waive certain provisions of the current zoning bylaw. And so this zoning table that you see in front of you basically say, here's what's required under existing zoning, here's what's there today, here's what we're proposing, and here's whether or not we're asking for a waiver. And you will see that in all but one of those categories, we don't need a waiver. And what that means is that with regard to the dimensional requirements for the underlying zoning on this property, our property complies. The only thing that we're asking for a zoning waiver on is the multi-family, the number of multi-family housing units, as well as the parking. So we will probably be revisiting this as we go through the hearings.
The planning board on the parking.
And with that, we're going to turn it over to our traffic person, who's going to talk a little bit about traffic and parking.
Yes. Again, Jason Adams with Bowman Consulting. So we prepared a traffic impact study looking at the safety and operations of the surrounding roadway network. Our study looked at the two signalized intersections in close proximity to the site, Beaver Street and Medway Road, and the west, Burr Street and Medway Road, as well as taking a look at the proposed site driveway and access points. So we completed a data collection effort here in April of 2024 during the weekday morning and weekday afternoon peaks, which is typical for this type of development. As part of our safety review, we-
You say weekend?
Weekday.
Weekday.
Weekday, weekday morning, 7:00 to 9:00, and weekday afternoon, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
And school was in session?
School was in session, right. Yep, April. So it's a good month to count, for sure. We completed a review of available mass DOT crash data for the most recent five-year period available. We took a look at the site distance of the proposed site driveway, and I know we were just talking about moving the site driveway further to the north. That was something we worked on with Matt and John and their team. The existing site driveway that's serving that parking lot right now does not meet site distance requirements, so what we did was we requested they try to move that site driveway a little further to the north just to improve the visibility, and they were able to accommodate that. So that's where you see the move of the site driveway was based on our review of site distance. So where it's located now does meet requirements and recommendations for the speeds along Beaver Street. We took a look at the project trip generation using data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They're the industry standard for projecting trip generation rates, so we can understand the number of vehicles that are expected to be generated by the project. Those were distributed to those study area roadways, and we completed a capacity analysis that looks at the existing traffic conditions now in 2024, and then we project out to a future year of 2031, look at the traffic operations with and without the project to understand the impacts of the project. And lastly, maybe most importantly, we took a look at the parking, looking at town regulations, the amount of parking that is provided, and then looking at industry standard to understand again if we feel as though there is enough parking, and we do. So just to summarize some of our conclusions here, again, that site driveway was relocated further north based on the existing location not meeting the site distance requirements. So with the location of the site driveway, as it is shown on the plans today, it does provide adequate site distance for vehicles approaching the driveway as well as for vehicles exiting the driveway. We show minimal impact, no real changes in level of service or delay as a result of the project due to the fairly low trip generation. And then, in terms of our parking review, the 157 vehicles, parking spaces that are provided, that results in a parking rate of 1.52 parking spaces per unit. Looking at data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, again, that's industry standard, the parking demand for this type of land use and the size would be 1.23 parking spaces per unit. So we are over what industry standard says is the requirement of this type of land use, and therefore feel it's appropriately parked.
So I think we're going to take a pause for a second if you have questions on this. I do also want to point out that Beaver Street is a one-way for those who may not be familiar with the location. So people coming down Beaver Street towards 109, they're going to take a right in, I'm sorry, they're going to take a left in, left out. So the traffic is somewhat controlled in the sense that it's going in and out, you know, from a one-way street. So do you want us to go on to the same presentation for Fortune, or do you want to pause and ask some questions? Oh, and you need to introduce it.
Just a quick question on the entrance. Is there any deceleration lane? It doesn't look like there's any deceleration lane, correct?
No. With the amount of volume on Beaver Street and the number of vehicle trips in, it's not a warranted situation for any kind of deceleration lane.
And I know you have a note in here on the school department. As we did with the other 40Bs, I'd like to get an idea, based on all your research, how many children or how many students would approximately be pushed into the school system based on this project? The other project, it gives the school committee, the school department, some idea of what they may be facing in the future. And I clearly can't hold you to it, but if you've done these enough, you probably have a pretty decent idea based on commodity units and the mixes that you have approximately. That's all.
If there is someone within the school department that I can connect with, the best way for us to get you that information is to look at similar types of developments that exist in the community and find out what their school age counts are, and then apply that to this.
The others that were approved provided that information to the school department based on previous-
The schools, yeah. We may be saying the same things. I just, I want to make sure my data is very accurate.
Yeah, I just don't read for a nail from Quick Street obviously.
Okay. So it's okay. So that's what I thought. And it'll take, you know, probably take a little bit. It is a little bit of an analysis. It's typically not something that we discuss under 40Bs, because everyone is allowed to have access, you know, fair access to housing. We understand your request. We will do the best that we can to get that information.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah.
I got a question, if you don't mind. One of these pages has the recharge units, the drainage recharge units, it looks like it's underneath the actual building.
Matt?
No, it's under the courtyard.
Am I looking at the wrong one? Let me see.
Oh, that's the existing.
Oh, that's the old one.
So this will be removed.
Or that's going to be- So that's existing, now it's going to just be-
Do you want?
This is the one that's in there.
I just don't know if, I think you need to open up the other hearing first.
We want to close people?
Well, no, we're not closing. I think we're going to keep them open.
Chris, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't right now.
So-
Mark?
Just group one on nine? It's a big issue.
What are the questions on group 109?
Just the traffic.
What did he say?
God can't fix 109.
Well, I think if, there is going to be presumably a traffic peer review, and, you know, we didn't go into, you know, the trip volumes, but certainly someone's going to be looking at that from, you know, from both sides. So, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, do you want to open the other hearing and have us go through Fortune? What are you comfortable with?
Do you have any questions?
It's kind of a little unusual.
We can close this, and then we can open the other one. You have any more? No, I'm good. Chris, you have any more questions?
Do we need him to close it?
No.
Can, yeah. Do we want it continued? Because we've got a few business at the end.
We're probably going to continue for another night.
Well, I know, but there's a few things that's sort of at the end.
Go ahead. Yeah. Let me open up the second hearing.
Perfect.
We can close this one and continue unless you want to revert back to-
At the end, I would like to talk about the peer reviews and other things, so if you don't mind keeping it open, and then you can continue both of them at the end, is that okay?
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. So we'll put this on pause. Yes. Spell pause? That's it.
That's it.
Okay. On the application of JV Realty Corporation 32 Hastings Street for continental permit in General Law Chapter 40B in relation to 7.840 fossil land, known as 310 Fortune Boulevard. Petition proposes development construct of 52 unit rental apartment development on the site, not less than 13 units to be restricted as affordable, below and above the basis pursued to the applicable requirements of the law and requirements of the financial agency. Project eligibility on the lizard sharing mass housing agency in relation to the site on October 24th. So with that, we will now open up 310.
Mr. Chairman, just that we're discussing the same recommendation, we have a draft class A, right?
Okay, so a motion?
Motion.
Motion by John. Second.
Second.
Second by Mark. All goes in favor? I opposed. Okay, unanimous. All right, let's jump into 310. That's 310?
Yes.
Are you ready for us?
We're ready.
Okay. So this is, you're going to feel like you have déjà vu, that we've been through this once before.
Introduce yourself, someone?
Still Lynn Sweet. So, I'm just looking down. Okay. So this is the site on Fortune Boulevard. It's going, we're proposing 52 rental units in one building. It is currently a paved parking lot with overflow parking from the adjacent dealership. Similar to the other project, it's going to be a four-story elevator building. It will, we're proposing 98 surface parking spaces. We are proposing a brand-new driveway to get to the location of the site. Similar, 5% units will be ADA group to standards, all units will be visitable, Class A apartment finishes, same unit finishes for market rate and affordable. We have provided pedestrian connection out to Fortune Boulevard, and we've provided also an outdoor passive recreation space. It will also be dark sky compliant. We also look forward to our conversation with the school department about the best location for drop off and pickup. The changes for this project since we applied for the PAL are significant, I would say. We actually reduced the number of units in the building from 60 down to 52, and basically shortened the building on either side, a total of 30 feet, in order to create better fire access on either side of the building. So I am going to turn it over to our architect again. Axel.
All right. Greetings again. So it's a very similar story with this structure. We don't have the site aspects here that we did with Beaver Street, where we cradled the courtyard with the C-form footprint. Here, this is, you know, just as efficient of a footprint as we can- Here, this is, you know, just as efficient as of a footprint as we can come up with. The philosophy behind all the units is the same. Each unit is laid out to maximize exposure at the daylight. The balconies on this project are primarily situated at the ends of the structure just due to the geometrical constraints of the footprint. Go to the next. Oh, yeah, thank you. So, you know, the building has the standard amenities that the previous building did. Elevator core serving all levels, community amenity spaces on the ground floor, a number of which are included, mailroom, kitchens, co-working spaces, all of those amenities we discussed previously. The facade facing the parking lot here is, or no, this is actually facing plan east, I believe, on the site plan. Yep. So this is the facade here that lacks the balconies. We didn't actually think that it was super necessary on that side. We did include all the recessed balconies facing the parking lot. So in the approach to the building, you still have that rhythm of deep shadow lines with recesses. And then on the back, the outlook over to the adjacent property and the terrain there is what these units are getting in exchange. If we go to the next, yep, so very similar typical layout of unit styles here, prioritizing the open floor plan and blending of communal living spaces surrounded by the non-supporting private functions. The elevations will also look very similar. So the same kit of parts is employed here. And of course, the ultimate objective is to optimize our use of resources and keep this highly efficient in its construction. And so the details are simple, easily executable, which also allows us to ensure the greatest longevity of waterproofing details and energy efficiency of the building. And then if we go to the, so a similar rendering, this is taken from the vehicular approach coming from the west. And so you can see here are the recessed balconies and we have all of the similar architectural devices employed from the previous project, utilizing that New England vernacular kit of parts and cladding materials and then blending those with sort of contemporary twist and the simple geometrical forms of the rectangle that we see.
So you'll see that the side of this building is flat. We did that, and again, based on our conversation with the fire department from the site walk just so that there wouldn't be anything that would possibly interfere with this fire truck. One thing both buildings are going to have in common, which I know sometimes becomes a long, a lot of discussion, is that there will be indoor trash rooms. So everything will be handled inside the building. There won't be outside dumpsters. So sexy subject.
Okay, we're not having access around the back of the building?
They'll have. I'll show you on the plan.
Yeah. Yeah. We're going to site plan now.
Start on this one. Is it on this one?
Why don't we go to site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. It's coming.
It's coming.
All right. Thank you. Again, I'll do kind of the before and after of the site here. So this is Fortune Boulevard along the southern part of the plan here. This is all existing parking essentially for the car dealership operation. It's overflow, it's underutilized. We're keeping the entire development within the envelope of pavement that already exists out there today. So just like the other project, if anything, we're actually reducing the impervious area with this project. There are some wetland systems throughout these wooded areas. We're not encroaching any closer to those than the paving that already does exist there. So that'll be, there we go. Perfect. So you can see the additional green spaces. We are actually providing a dog park here, fire pits, lawn area for play. The access would be off Fortune Boulevard here. We'd be sloping up through the burn that exists today, through a few parking areas, but back to the site. So this would be sort of a wooded corridor. You'd be driving back through and arriving at the front door of the building here.
What's the elevation, please, from the first parking area to the Fortune Boulevard street?
I think there's about six feet of grade change here, John, if I'm not mistaken. I can click to the grade and plan in a second.
It's a tight time.
It's, yeah, but we've got a, we've got a pretty decent length of run here to make up that grade. So that shouldn't be, that should be like a 5% slope or so. It's fairly gentle. We are pushing through that hillside that you see as you're coming around this corner. Right now, this is a steep slope, so we're cutting into that area. But we'll be providing green buffer vegetation, additional evergreen buffering along the roadway. So this, this'll again be sort of a drive through the woods back to the residential building here. Yes, question about fire. This did come up on our site walk with our initial set of plans, so we've made some modifications. We pulled the building back off the property line a bit more. We are providing a walkway along the entire rear of the property and fire trucks will be able to access back to both of these locations and then pull their hose through to the rear of the building. There aren't protruding balconies. That was one of the concerns when we had the initial discussion with the fire chief. So we've made some modifications and again, we'll run this plan by them again when we have the opportunity to discuss it further.
That's safety. What's the elevation difference between the parking lot next to the building, the other side?
Oh, here?
No, opposite.
Oh, this, I believe slopes down to the parking area.
Right. Do you know what that elevation is?
I can grab that off the grading plan for you. It should be on the next, not the next sheet, but the sheet after. But I can, I can provide that for sure.
Recall, it's pretty substantial.
Yeah, it's like 15, 20 feet, right?
I think it is. It is about 20 feet, maybe 15.
Oops, sorry, Matt.
Oh, that's okay. Go right ahead, Tark.
You might not be able to see it now.
That's the site plan. One more. So it's protecting my eyes. That's what that is.
It's too fancy.
Yeah, you can see the slope on the, it's a little faded here, so I'll have to get you zoomed in, plan it, and take a look at that. Oh, great. So 319.
320 is the bottom.
320.
So 20 feet.
Yeah, so 20, 21 feet.
That's just where they stopped too. It might even go further than that. They might not have gone all the way down. So it's at least.
Yeah, it's not much further. But again, the wooded buffer here would be preserved because we're not, we're not disturbing any of the slope beyond the parking area.
So there's no, there's no availability to do a replication and push that building further in with the weapons?
Which direction? This way?
Yeah.
This is all wet right up to basically that line right there. So we'd be impacting resource areas to push it any further to the west.
Our goal with both projects is not to disturb any more area that has, then has already been disturbed.
That's pretty tight.
Would you mind going back to the rendered plan, Tark? Thank you. So you can see the existing edge of paving right here on this aerial photograph. So that wooded slope would remain intact. We're basically putting this at the elevation that the parking is now, so we wouldn't be disturbed anymore of this area.
How many feet do you have from the back of the building to the property line roughly?
I think it's about 30 feet.
Is that a slab of area or is that?
Slab of area, yeah. Okay.
Which one do you want, Matt?
If you go to Lynn's zoning slide there, this, just to illustrate, again, I think you suggest that we're really seeking any relief other than the use on the residential dwelling units and then the required amount of parking spaces.
Just so for a point of knowledge, all the other 40Bs, we did not weigh anything on the 310. Just so that you.
So two per unit?
Yeah.
So you have, you can look up those past decisions.
Yep. We're, Jason will get into traffic a little bit, but I think, you know, the demand that the IT would suggest is about one and a quarter per unit. So we feel like we're, we're within, you know, at least as many as that requires. We want to make sure there's enough for marketability, obviously. We don't want to have a parking issue either. And then we do have the opportunity for overflow parking, you know, to the west on this site too, if the need were to arise.
I mean, people are definitely moving towards less parking these days for a variety of reasons that we don't want to, you know, pave areas where we don't need to, again, because commuting is less because we have majority of one-bedroom units. So there's, there's a lot of reasons.
Quite a while. That's okay. Switch around. Any questions? Absolutely. So is there any accommodation that any of these projects for any type of bus hut for children that have to wait for a bus, similar to what Avalon did on Bertrand?
Once, once we know where they, where they want it, we will be very happy to work with whatever, whatever they need. This is a, this is a very small building with, you know, with 52 units. So, and there's a little bit of grade, grade on it. So I, I think that we could, I'm sure that there's, and we also need to worry about sight lines. So there's a number of different considerations. We hear what you're requesting. We want to hear, we can certainly go into the school, again, since I'm going to be talking to the superintendent anyway, he may want to put me in touch with the bus company and we'll look at these issues for sure.
Bus coordinator is Jamie Legore.
Okay.
Jamie, Jamie Legore?
Legore.
Okay, thank you.
So just a couple of comments because I'm going through a couple of these items. Similar to some of the other ones, again, mass DOT mechanism, similar to the last ones we did specifically on Cedar Street, Stoneridge 1 and 2. We brought the police department in to give us an accident report as well to see if it matched up with what DOT had. It was pretty far off. So we're going to ask to do the same thing for all of the projects.
We certainly welcome that, that meeting. Do you know who you're going to be using for the traffic peer review? Who did you use on Stoneridge?
CDI. They're going to sign a contract with somebody there. There's no conference. We don't know exactly who it is yet.
Okay.
We'll have some of that information next week.
Okay. Traffic.
Yeah.
We got a little, just a little bit more and we're almost done.
Yeah, again, including a traffic impact study, looking over the safety and operations. So our study focused on the area immediately adjacent to the site driveway. So we're looking at the Toyota overflow, overflow lot as well as the truck children across the street. Take you through the methodology, which again is similar to the previous project. Move forward. So this one we collected in data weekday morning and weekday afternoon again in May of 2024, also with school in session. Looked at the mass DOT crash data. Again, that's the standard approach. If, if the town requires us to take a look at local crash data, you know, we'll certainly do what we need to do to give everybody the right amount of information. The site distance again is a big focus point, working with Matt and John and locating that along Fortune Boulevard to make sure the visibility for vehicles entering and exiting is appropriate. Our trip generation, this is a smaller building, smaller amount, fewer vehicle trips associated with it. But again, looking at the Institute of Transportation Engineers to project that number and then completing the capacity analysis of the project site driveway and the adjacent driveways to understand the impacts of the project. And as we've been talking about, the parking review, we completed that review as well using the Institute of Transportation Engineers data. So here, the site distance, what's the way that the site driveway is located, meets the requirements given the speeds along Fortune Boulevard. There is an even smaller impact to surrounding roadways and intersections. It's a very low generator here with the number of units proposed. And then the parking with the 98 spaces, that's a 1.88. Again, the number that we are seeing industry standard is the 1.23 per unit. So it's a radar ratio here. And again, feels though it is appropriately parked for what would be required.
And I don't know, Jonathan, if you just want to give a quick one minute on the waivers since we're going to be coming.
This would be the only building on Fortune Boulevard that would allow a bus, correct? They stopped at the hotels now. Hopefully that's justified in the future. But this would be the only spot.
They go through Fortune Boulevard.
Yeah, but they don't make any stops at Fortune Boulevard.
They make a difference off the street.
I know. The question is, does the bus have the authority to locate a public natural property?
There's no way that they're going to be able to pull into this.
Start with Fortune Boulevard.
Turn around.
They won't, they won't go into.
They're not going to go into private property.
Are we talking about the school bus or public transportation?
School bus.
Yeah, they're, they're going to, yeah, they're, they're going to tell us what, what they want and we will accommodate to the best of our ability what they want.
This has been debated in a lot of these 310s.
Sure.
It's a problem because it rules the contract with bus companies.
Yeah, they're not going to pull into private property.
Fortune Boulevard's full lanes and they go fast. But there'll be some.
So we have a couple more general slides and wanted to pause for a minute to see if there were specific questions about Fortune Boulevard.
I just have a question of, why, why would you make the entrance so tight and so difficult when you have enough ground right next to it to do a gradual entrance in and do cross easements? Just a question.
It's a liability issue with the dealership.
Yeah, but you can control that. So take a look at the courtyard in Ariat and those, for instance. You know what I mean? They've got that one common entrance and one flies off from there. I'm just saying, this is a, it's a decent grade change and a real tight cut, but it's just a comment.
It's 11 feet from the street, just right around the turn. The other thing is on the backside, it's about a 45-degree angle. It's about a 30-foot drop on the backside.
Right.
And there's no access to the backside too.
There's, there's no requirement for a fire truck to be able to access a building from four sides?
There is a, you guys, there's a hall that comes over that.
Yeah, but there's a walkway in the back so that they can park their trucks and bring hoses down, down the back if they, they need to. But most likely what they're going to do is they're going to park in front of the building, put a ladder on top of it, go into the building, punch holes in.
Do they even have a turn, a turn radius in front of the building? Is there even a turn radius?
I believe that we submitted, we did submit an auto turn plan. So in the civil set of our notebooks, you'll find, find that.
Is it in here?
It is, it is in there. And again, I think it'll be important when the traffic peer review is done for them to look at that.
Yeah, we definitely ran the fire truck and again, once we're, we can speak to the fire chief and get their comments. If we need to tweak some radiuses or whatnot, we've got the ability to do so.
I'm assuming this is all going to be electric.
So we submitted electronic files the day that we, we.
You used the, the systems.
Oh, the systems.
Utilities.
Yes, and it will be an all-electric building, sorry.
Both of them?
Both buildings will be all, will be all-electric. That is industry standard today.
Can you parking numbers, and I should ask this sooner, any EV charging?
Absolutely. Yeah, there'll be EV charging stations for sure.
What's required by code?
Yeah, it's 10%.
10%.
10%, yeah.
10% I love it too.
But you know, by the time this is built, it could be higher.
We've got it.
We'll be, we'll be back, back on gas, like, yeah, that's pretty funny. And so do you want to say, if you're okay, we'll spend a very brief moment on waivers and then move to next steps.
Anybody have any other questions?
So, Mr. Chair, just briefly, as you know, chapter 40B allows applicants to request waivers from local zoning and other land use restrictions as part of comprehensive permit projects. I have to say, in, you know, the three decades I've been doing that, this work, this this project is seeking remarkably few waivers. So in terms of zoning, really, I guess I'll, I'll start with Fortune because that's where we are now. They're pretty much all the same. Other than procedural requirements, such as, you know, we don't want to have to go separately to planning board for site plan approval, since this is a comprehensive permitting process. The only substantive waivers we're looking for under zoning are for use, since residential use isn't allowed, and parking. And the parking, and I hear you, Mr. Chair, but the, the parking waivers we're requesting are fairly modest, especially for this project.
For Fortune, yeah.
I think we're, we require 106 and we're at 98 or something.
Yeah, yeah, we're at 1.88 and 1.0.
And then on the Beaver Street project, it's like, you know, almost 1.6, I think.
Yeah.
And I can tell you that there are very few projects being built. And if you, I just happened to pull up aerial imagery from this year of Stone Ridge 1. And when you, bearing in mind, no idea what time of day, parking lot is empty. Probably an eighth of the spaces are taken. And I'm sure.
Did you run the G I S? Is that what you did, Milford's G I S?
No, I just, I just did a Google satellite image for this year. I'm sure that we can take a look at parking utilization. But I will tell you that every study I've seen from every agency is that two spaces per unit is extremely, you end up extremely overparked, particularly for a project that is predominantly one-bedroom, then two, then three. So for what it's worth, those are the only waivers we're looking for on, on zoning. And then we're.
Sometimes one-bedrooms have two cars.
Sometimes they do, and sometimes three-bedrooms have no cars.
I get, I get the, I get the, I get the whole puzzle, so I'm not.
Understood. I, I only want to speak to it briefly because you had mentioned it. And obviously, that'll be a subject of the traffic peer review. And then in terms.
I'm not saying I disagree with you.
What's that?
I'm not saying I disagree.
Understood, understood. In terms of stormwater bylaw, again, just procedural, we're asking to not have to file a separate notice of intent under the stormwater bylaw that will be dealt with as part of this project. And same with sewer connection department, under the sewer department rules and regulations. Other than that, they're really, other than for the affordable unit fees, we're not looking for any substantive waivers on either project. So basically, in terms of substantive zoning requirements, there are two for each project. Use and parking, and parking is pretty minimal, so.
Well, we, we have that same procedure that we go through, whether it's, and again, all departments are going to take a look at the sewer department.
Sure.
Along with the planning board and all other departments.
And if there's something.
Same with the water company, frankly, you know, all the.
Yeah.
The water department.
Yeah, we did, we did do flow testing and that, those results are also in the application.
Right.
Fire flow testing. So.
We're going to bring in the, the water department. We've got some clarity issues that I'd like to see based on what was provided prior to the last three 40Bs being built and the amount of usage versus what is now in a letter format. So we're going to have some discussions with them as well.
So that concludes our, our formal presentation. We really appreciate.
You did a great job.
Your time. Well, Ty did a great job picking up equipment for us. So we're really, really fortunate that after three best buys, we, we have a projector.
And now you can use it going forward.
Yeah, I know, you got, you guys might want to rent it from us going forward. You never know.
Our technology's been down, so we've been.
You guys have been struggling. We, you know, we understand that. So typically, and, and, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how you handle this. We usually get a, a, a peer review contract to take a look at. And.
What we do in peer review, not a lot of the way, is maybe other units don't do this. But the fee that's paid, if we can do the peer review out of the fee, that's that.
Out of our application fee? So you don't ask a developer for a separate fee?
Well, I think you may, some of the smaller ones.
Okay.
Bigger ones, you pay $50 a unit, $300 a unit, so that. 200, you get the smaller ones, maybe not. So that's part of what I've got to look at in the C P I.
Right. Yeah.
As soon as, as soon as we've got some good estimates, we know all the details. We try to keep it within that if we can.
That's fair. Yeah, but we definitely want to look at, at the scope so that we understand, you know, that our professionals understand that, you know, what's being looked at. So that sounds like a terrific process. You know, you've, you've got my email. And so I guess we won't be providing any funding because you're not asking that tonight, which is, which is terrific. Obviously, you know, we'll drop off whatever, you know, whatever is needed. And, and it's really up to you as to what the next steps are. If there are particular boards or department heads that you want us to meet with, we're happy to do, you know, working sessions with you, you know, offline. It's your, it's your 180 days and, and we want to make sure that you get all the information that you need.
If you'd like to, if you're ready, you should feel free to contact all the departments. Sewer department, obviously, is a very important one. The town engineer, that's going to be important still.
Okay.
You don't have to wait for any approvals. As soon as you can contact them, work with them in any way that you can. As soon as we get the peer review, we'll have that also, of course. So again, you don't have to wait for any.
Yeah.
I presume, Mr. Chairman, you can continue this for a bit of time now that we do.
Well, it gives it time to get through.
Do you know what topics you want to take first or second so that, you know, and I'm sure that some of them might come down to what, where the peer reviewers are and when they have something to talk about?
It does make sense to do some topic, but I don't want to do that tonight.
Yeah, I mean, we, we normally do, we normally do traffic and then stormwater, but it's up to, traffic's usually easy.
I don't want to drag all them here.
Yeah, we don't.
Well, again, that raises an interesting question. I don't want to suggest that we should, but do you want perhaps keep scheduling these two projects for the same night? Do you have officials?
Looks for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I'm more concerned about them getting what they need and a timing for the sewer department to look at this.
Sewer department has, everybody in town has a.
Town engineer, planning board is going to just want to go through it.
Yeah, and anyway, I know that I renewed your link. If anyone, you know, I don't know if you're able to, to download onto your server, but if anyone needs that electronic link renewed or you need, you know, more plans or something, just.
Could you send this as electronic?
Absolutely. I can probably do that before I leave.
You guys, if you're done on this.
It won't get to the system. It's only looking for a million dollars for this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you the link because it's too big to send as an attachment. Oh, yeah, everything is, is electronic. And there was one set of large plans that we submitted, and we submitted a full-size traffic study and full-size stormwater, too.
Large plans are concerned?
Yeah.
We'd like to get, what do you, it's five of each?
They're back here.
What do we get?
Five each?
And let me look at my cover letter. Hang on one sec, I can tell you.
Whatever we were, I know we checked in with the two of you on what we should be submitting.
Let me just look at my cover letter and I'll be able to tell you.
Would you mind just emailing the fire chief, let him know he can talk to us? The email we have from Dan is that you told, you told him not to talk to us.
Maybe he misinterpreted. We, we actually only gave you one 24 by 36 set of each plans, architectural, civil.
Well, I'd like to have it.
And then we gave you the 15 notebooks.
Full set of plans, probably three of each.
Three, three more sets in addition to the one?
We have one here on each, right?
One of each, yeah.
At least two more.
You want two more or can you help me out with that, Matt?
Whenever.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'll, it'll probably come directly from, from the engineers just because I don't have those big machines in my office. Okay, so two more full-size sets.
Do you, are you currently, do you just talk to town engineer, town planner? Have you discussed anything with them?
No, not yet.
No, I mean, we had reached out to various people during the earlier process and, and was very difficult to get people to engage. Now I think that we're in this process. Hopefully, the doors will be open and we'll get those discussions going. So.
So, yeah, you already scheduled it. Just as long as they have enough time to get through that, the holidays coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah, you scheduled it.
The 16th was the other one. We have our regular. The 9th is a regular.
9th, 16th.
16th was a Tuesday on that.
No, 16th looks like it's a Thursday.
It is.
Yeah.
9th, 16th. I can do the 21st. Can you do the 21st? 21st?
No, 21st is planning board.
Planning board, okay. 22nd?
Okay, 23rd.
23rd? 23rd?
One more, one more.
For the 14th?
16th is Thursday.
We could do 14.
So Melissa, we're at our general meetings on the 9th.
Yeah.
We've got Stone Ridge, 3 on 16th, so to 23rd? How's January 23rd, which is a Thursday?
We can probably do it downstairs. We did 7:04, you're going to do it 6:30.
6:30.
In the town hall.
Is that right?
I come from Wildsley, but 6:30 I'll make it. I'll leave at 5:00.
Well, the reason we tried to do it earlier.
Yeah.
So that people don't have to try and get home, get their feet up, and then not want to get out.
Yeah.
No, that's terrific.
Also, scheduled them both.
The, the input from the public so far has been overwhelming.
Yeah, should we?
We can probably do this.
Unless you want to do.
Yeah, no, we'd let.
If you want to do the 21st, which is a Tuesday, it's up to you guys.
Um, can you do that on the 21st?
Yeah, I have planning board that night.
Now, keep it at the 21st.
23rd, okay, 6:30 in, in a room downstairs. Okay. Engineers, will you, are, is any, are you guys available?
I won't, but if we need somebody for the last week, I'm sure, we can sure.
And you're all checked for traffic? Usually it makes a traffic. All right, so that is.
That's 6:30.
Milford. And what's the name of the room?
Room 3.
Milford room.
Is there any more comments on Fortune Boulevard? If not, we'll close in Fortune Boulevard's hearing and we're continuing that until January 23rd, 6:30 downstairs.
That's up to them.
Any other questions on Beaver Street? Questions on Beaver Street? So that is closed and we'll continue that until January 23rd at 6:30 as well. So with that, I believe we can join.
I think, I think you need to vote. I think you need to vote to continue both of them.
Yeah, we have to vote to continue.
Did you actually? Yeah, you need to vote. That's all.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Both hearings?
Both hearings.
So until January 23rd, 6:30. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Close, bat your hands. Gentlemen, remember, put that on your calendars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Take your office.
We appreciate your time.
And that will be short.
Nice Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.